In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in a notice of January 10, 2022. Said notice was posted at the entrance to the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertising the Nutley Sun on January 10 of 2022, and posted on the district website. Can everybody please rise for a flag salute? Roll call, Mr. Pisa.
Mr. Boss, normal.
Here.
Mr. Pathak.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Here.
Mr. Demand.
Here.
Mr. Forar.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Cornisello.
Here.
Do you have any approval of the minutes?
I think we have any approval of the minutes.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Ballot favor. By way, any correspondence this evening, Mr. Pisa?
Yes. We received a correspondence from Life Changer on December 27. Dear Nutley Board of Education, congratulations, a member of your community has nominated Superintendent Dr. Julie Glazer for the 2021-22 National Life Changer of the Year Program. Life Changer of the Year is a annual program sponsored by National Life Group Foundation that recognizes and rewards the very best K-12 teachers and school employees from around the country. Dr. Glazer was nominated because she meets the criteria of an educator who is making a difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. The nominator stated, and I quote, "It was a very tough year for K-12 education due to COVID-19, but despite the challenges, Dr. Glazer's leadership ensured that this year was still one of progress and growth in every aspect of her district." And I quote, "Dr. Glazer has modeled that Nutley is stronger together, and together we all grow," said the nominator. As a nominee, Dr. Glazer is in the running to receive one of 18 cash prizes. The grand prize, which is $10,000, is split between the winner and his or her school district or organization. Dr. Glazer has identified Nutley Education Foundation as the recipient to support the district in teacher-driven admissions. You can view Dr. Glazer's Life Changer nominee profile on the Life Changer of the Year website by going to www.lifechangeroftheyear.com. This is not only exciting news for Dr. Glazer, but for the entire district. Congratulations. If you have any questions about the nomination or how our program works, please do not hesitate to ask. You can also sign up for email updates on our website at lifechangeroftheyear.com. Sincerely, Natalie, Mount Program Director, Life Changer of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pisa. Well, Dr. Glazer, you've got a couple of beds and getting some stuff in there for you. Well, hopefully, you are going to be one of the top leaders, because I know that Nutley will be better for it, and I know that's something that's going to be very important for you as well. Is there any other correspondence this evening?
No, I have two public comments that I need to read in when we get to public comments that we got emailed today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pisa. We are going to move into the Start Strong data presentation. I'm going to ask the board members to go on down into the audience.
Hello. We understand that the audio from the board meeting was not the best, so in an effort to help support our community, we're going to rerecord our Start Strong assessment presentation. So it may not be exactly the same as we did in the board meeting, but we hope to hit the same points and go through the same material. So the Start Strong assessment was given this fall, and it was a standards-based assessment. In lieu of the last spring, the 2021 New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the DOE filed a waiver with the federal government to move the testing to the fall in order to assess the standards, but give information to educators to inform the school year as students came back from a very challenging learning environment. It was administered quickly. Each test was about an hour. It was administered in person, and it did provide immediate results to the teachers and the students shortly thereafter and to the families. We're reporting on the district-level data today. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment schedule will resume this cycle this spring for the 21-22 school year. The Start Strong assessment does not replace the local standards-based benchmarks that we use internally, that we have in place, that we use such as common assessments, benchmark assessments, running records, grade level, standards-based report card assessments, those types of things. And it does not replace this spring cycle of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment.
This next slide summarizes some general information about the Start Strong test design. The assessment is really intended, as Mr. Vania mentioned, to provide information on the mastery of the previous year's standards. So it should be used in conjunction with other district assessments and informal data by teachers. The real purpose of this was to give teachers information to help drive their instruction. So, for example, grade five ELA Start Strong assessment data is aligned to the standards for grade four ELA. The Start Strong assessment used released high-quality items from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Item Bank, and these items have gone through a rigorous development process to ensure that they're both standard-aligned and free of bias. And the assessment contained efficient question types, which is a little bit different than the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, and it allowed teachers to produce on-demand reports to use to drive their instruction. So these assessments were computer-scored through multiple-choice and technology-enhanced items, which are similar to drag-and-drop items, and that allowed for real-time feedback and shorter test administration time. So teachers were able to access really meaningful data, including specific items and standards that students needed support with. And this allowed them to really use that data to create flexible groups for students and meet their needs. So again, the Start Strong assessment was administered in 45- to 60-minute times, and just to reiterate, it's not meant to replace any local benchmark assessments, and it's not meant to replace the requirement for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which will still be given this spring.
Some things to consider when looking at the Start Strong results. First thing would be the impact of COVID-19 on the testing cycle itself when students were testing, as well as the learning environment they were coming from. These students took an in-person test with COVID in play. Districts should not compare the individual student, school, or district data to, within the district, between schools, let's say, or even to local districts surrounding Nutley. It's hard to compare things when there are so many different variables at stake here. The state does not recommend that and has not officially released statewide data. And also, that, you know, please understand that Start Strong was not a test that's used to predict future performance like the PSAT or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, but rather provide real-time data to educators and families to assess where students are at that current time.
So the Start Strong assessments provide one point of data to support things like district-level curriculum planning. This information and this data allows our content coordinators to really look at our internal assessments along with this data to determine if any curriculum adjustments need to be made. For example, if there's essential prerequisite learning that hasn't been mastered by a significant group of students, this may mean adjusting the current year's curriculum to ensure that there aren't gaps that would affect the understanding and mastery of the current curriculum. The data is also used to evaluate the scope and sequence based on the distribution of student needs. So this could include adjusting pacing for specific units or concepts where students may need additional time to master content that they're not solidly proficient in yet. And it also provided for differentiation and scaffolding based on student results. Also, using the individual student reports, the ISRs, have helped to drive conversations between parents and educators. So here you'll see a copy of the individual score report, just for your reference. These were sent home to parents at the end of December. At the top there, you'll see an information box with test details, such as your child's name, their grade, their date of birth, and the test that was administered. But really, the most meaningful piece of information on the report is your child's support level, which is shown on sort of a speedometer graphic towards the middle of the page. This graphic shows the number of raw points that your child earned, along with the threshold raw point score for each of the three support levels. So here you'll see that the light purple section of the graphic represents strong support may be needed, the regular purple section indicates that some support may be needed, and the dark purple section indicates that less support may be needed. Again, a little bit different than the traditional way that we're used to seeing an assessment such as the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment recorded. Below the speedometer, you'll also see more specific data on how your child scored related to specific contents within that content area. So for example, here we're looking at a math individual score report, so you'll see specifics on how a student performed in linear equations and geometry, for example. But this report is really just the tip of the iceberg of the kind of data that we have from the Start Strong assessment. So what you're looking at now is an individual score report, but we also have access to district-wide data, which we'll share in a few minutes, as well as school-specific data, grade level, and teacher-specific data that really is meant to be used to drive instruction.
So to begin to look at the district-level data, we bring to our 100% stack columns, and the measurements are the same. Strong support is now in red, some support is now in yellow, and less support is now in green. So this graph here puts our students on 100% across the district, grades four through 10, as well as science that gets tested in grades 12. It is important to note that ELA and math test several times, four through 10, let's say, and science three different times throughout a student's career. So there's different levels of testing here. But just to know, overall, on a district level, for all our buildings, in ELA, we tested where over 50%, about 56% need less support. And then in math, we're looking at a little over 30% needing less support, and in science, a little over 20%. And to look the other side of this, those students that need a strong support structure would be a little over 21% for ELA. For math, that number would look more like 35%, and for science, it's 37% would need strong support.
So here you'll see data for each grade level specific to English Language Arts. So just keep in mind, this is raw data again, and it's not able to be compared to any previous years, and there's no state or district factor group assessment data that's been released really purposefully so that these data points can be used by teachers to drive instruction and not to compare districts to one another. Here you'll see all grade levels had at least 50% of students scoring in the less support needed category. And just keep in mind also that this assessment does have its limits when compared to other assessments that students take, standardized assessments. For example, the ELA Start Strong did not include a writing section. It only had one literary task and one information task with multiple-choice and technology-enhanced question types, so no short answers or essays. This next slide shows math data by grade level, slightly lower than ELA scores here, but again, keep in mind, this is assessing the previous year's standards, and there is no comparable data available. So this is used by teachers to help them plan for instruction and to meet students' needs. Also, something to keep in mind when we look at math data is, at the right ends of the chart, the data pools students from several different grade levels and course tracks, specifically for geometry and Algebra II, those columns all the way to your right, and this can affect the data as well.
When looking at science data, it's important to consider there's three tests through a student's journey, and it's changed over time. So the grade 12 testing is relatively new in science, grade nine, as well as grade six. You can see how we score. As we go up in grades, more students need strong support. Just another way to look at data, we can look at some group data. While this is a very busy graph, it does bring together all three areas of testing in different subgroups, including students with disabilities on your left, followed by 504 students, ELL students, economically disadvantaged students, and on the right is the overall trend for the district. This is helpful for the district to begin conversations about where support may be needed in the subgroups. By looking at data in this way, we can identify that ELL students may have the strongest need when compared to the overall population of students, followed by students with disability. I do want to make mention that, you know, there are different numbers in this group, so while our overall population is pretty large, the ELL population is relatively small compared to that population. So, you know, what are we doing with this information? We are using this information to start a lot of conversation. Department of Buildings are using the data to support curricular and classroom shifts. Individual teachers have met with principals to look at how their students are doing. We did send the individual student reports home to the parents at the end of December. We are shifting some district-level programming based on some of the information we're receiving. We're expanding learning through strategies. We've added strategies teachers and strategies programming into the math bridges part. We've increased our summer support programming. Last summer, we involved many different subgroups and brought more students than ever into district for full day, or I'm sorry, for half-day instruction. We are expanding our executive functioning programming to include some ELL student programming at Washington Lincoln Schools currently. We are working with Gen Ed teachers through sheltered instruction professional learning to develop strategies for targeting groups. You know, even though this data shows us the need with ELL students, I know Julie Mitchour, our coordinator, has identified this prior to the Start Strong assessments being administered, and we've been heading in that direction. We're going to continue to administer our internal diagnostics, our benchmarks, and our common assessments to continue to measure students versus our standards, and we are going to look forward to getting more information from the spring testing cycle to further inform our decisions in district. We want to thank you, and we apologize for the audio problem from the board meeting. We hope this is similar to that presentation and helps supplement that presentation for our community. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cornisello, would you like to take questions now or later? We can open up, thank you for your time, and we can open up some questions at this time based on this presentation. Yes, ma'am. No, we have allocated the first portion of our ESTR funds, which we have allocated. Now, when you say ESTR funds, there's several different brands, ESTR, ESTR II, Arc ESTR. We have been approved for the first ESTR, the ESTR II. The Arc ESTR is still pending technically with the state. We have allocated a good portion of that grant. There should be another release of money because it's coming in two doses, and we'll look at that money in that Arc ESTR. There's certain monies that are just highlighted for extending the learning day. Mental health is another area, things of that nature. If I answer your question, your question, I'm sorry, we spent all the money in the ESTR grant. Thank you for your question. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Pisa, I believe the grant, 2.7 total, whole installments of Arc ESTR, I think it was 800,000 for ESTR II, and I believe the first ESTR was around 500,000. I'd have to check on that, too. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the question there was, I believe in a previous meeting, we can reference that we would be assessing our K-33 students, and really all students on their reading level, K-33 specifically, using the DIBELS. Right now, I don't have the data for you to tell you exactly the percentage that's the level of, but if you see me after the meeting, I'm happy to give that information to you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Mr. Vania and Mrs. Cornisello, great work as always. Appreciate the time and effort you put into that, and I'm sure you'll follow up with the public on those couple of questions. And we're going to move the meeting over to our Superintendent Dr. Julie Glazer for our superintendent's report.
Hello, everyone, guys. Happy new year. It has been a busy few weeks since we've been back. I hope you're enjoying being proud that our public health continues to mitigate the spread of COVID and other illnesses in our schools, that we've been able to stay open consistently for in-person instruction, and I am grateful to all of our students, staff, and families who have supported the efforts to make this possible. We're well aware that all of the changes that come from the Department of Health, from the CDC, from the Department of Education make it challenging, but we appreciate your flexibility every day. You will hear from Mr. Vania, Mr. Pisa, about some specific events during their reports tonight and also during our committee reports, but I did want to acknowledge everybody's efforts to allow us to be here all together this evening. An ongoing effort that we've had since October that I'd like to provide enough data on is our reregistration process. Approximately 3,700 students were identified to have their reregistration certified in the Nutley Public Schools. Of those, more than 3,500 have successfully completed the process of reregistration. Now, for a huge thank you to our registrar office team led by Natty Ferrer and Jean Boyle, who made all of this undertaking possible. At this time, despite numerous requests by email, telephone, certified mail, and delivered letters, approximately 50 students across all seven schools have not reregistered or have not submitted their paperwork. As per the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A22, the district has issued a preliminary notice of ineligibility for each of those students, including a notice to each family for a hearing before the Board of Education prior to a final decision on disenrollment from the district. The hearings will be scheduled collaboratively with the Board of Education during February. Once the hearings are held or if the parent, guardian, adult, student, or resident does not respond within the designated timeframe or comes to their hearing for an appeal, the Board of Education will make a determination of the student's eligibility, and will immediately provide notice in accordance with District Policy 5111 and the New Jersey Administrative Code of disenrollment from the Nutley Public Schools. This process concludes with a resolution at the February 28th Board of Education meeting. Our team is working around the clock to try and get your paperwork and process your paperwork. We've made phone calls, letters, like I said, we even go out to individual homes. If you're having a problem completing any aspect, please, please, please contact the registration team. If you don't know how to reach them after all of this time, reach out to me and I will connect you with them. We prefer not to disenroll any of our resident students by accident just because of non-compliance. Additionally, another new law was passed in New Jersey, this one on January 12, requiring school boards to have a student representative. In Nutley, we've always done that. That's been a longstanding practice. It's typically been our student council president. However, this year, reports have broken between representatives of a whole variety of student groups from Nutley High School, including our student council. Tonight, we have Darah Caswamy with us, our senior class president in court, and we are looking forward to your update. It's always a highlight of the meeting, so glad you're there with us. Thank you. Also, in the midst of all of our daily operations, there are often small and large emergencies that happen. Usually, they get resolved successfully, mostly go unnoticed. Tonight, I would like to recognize our code blue team from Radcliffe School. A code blue signifies that there's a medical emergency or ICIS interne near the school. And in the case of a code blue, appropriate information is provided to the whole school resulting in an immediate team response. The team is trained to assist until a medical first responders arrive. At Radcliffe School, the following team members, Christopher Weinstein, Sharon O'Grady, Farah Panichi, Sam Armando, Sue Quigley, Rachel Ryan, Cynthia McNulty, and the agency nurse Subbing for the day, Marlene Brabbett, sprang into action and according to everybody on the scene, including Principal Mike Carney, was simply amazing. In addition, Joseph Britner, Michael Scott, Joey Lombo, and Elizabeth Neola are also recognized for their efforts. The following letter is being placed in each person's personnel file. On Tuesday, January 28, 2022, the code blue team, which you are a member, was called into action for a medical emergency at Radcliffe School. You responded immediately as practiced, activated the AEB system, assisted with CPR compression until the emergency medical responders arrived, maintained order and calm for the rest of the school. The emergency medical team on site reported that your efforts made a difference in the patient's prognosis. There are never enough words to express the thanks of the great patient, family, learning community, in any of these situations. But please know your Radcliffe district and Nutley community recognizes and honors your willingness to come to the aid of the Nutley. Your actions have made us all proud. Each of those people that I mentioned will get a copy of that letter, and I'm happy to tell you that the medical emergency has been resolved successfully. The person has been discharged from the hospital, and this has all become law, and we're very grateful for it. I'm going to just stop there because it was such a happy note and a good note to end on, so I'd like to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vania now for our Assistant Superintendent's praise report. Sorry. I'd like to continue a lot of good messaging here by talking about the past month. We came back in January to a very challenging environment where the pandemic was ramped up a little bit, we got a surge. I want to just thank all of the staff, the faculty of all the buildings, from the studio staff to our strategies teachers who got into classrooms, our coordinators who went into classrooms. It was an all-hands-on-deck situation the first week we drew two back in January, and we were able to stay in-person for the students. So I know there's some spray garden teachers here. I want to pass on to you, as well as the rest of the teaching staff of the district. I also want to highlight the LPDC, Global Professional Development Committee. They organized, pivoted to a January 14 PD Day where they helped teachers really explore different things based on where we were. IXL. IXL, for example, SGO redevelopment, even just giving teachers time to meet in their grade level bands to talk about where we were in the learning cycle and how to move forward. The LPDC is chaired by Mike Murray and Justin Alasko, and they do a wonderful job. Thank you so much. The DEAC Committee met last Thursday, District Evaluation Advisory Committee, and we talked about how the evaluation for going of all staff, certified, uncertified staff, for feedback, input, and transparency. I think that meeting was very productive, and we look forward to a June meeting as well. I want to thank our SEL team, Mrs. Locan Solo, who kind of organized that parent night for the SEL program, to talk about the January parent night where we were able to share with parents some of the important work we're doing in the district. We also did a couple of other parent nights, and we're able to put them on our website under the district curriculum instruction page. You'll see recordings of the different parent nights, one on HIV, one on cancer-based report cards. So we're also looking forward to February seventeenth, Mr. Dwyer, who's social studies, is going to provide for us a curriculum update and update on his resources for his new program or for our new program in social studies, K twelve. That's it for my report. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're going to move on to our board secretary report, Mr. Pisa.
Thank you, Mr. Conasolo. Once again, I'd like to thank the Board of Education members and the central office staff for all of our work for the month of January on returning from the holiday. It's a challenging month, but very productive. We also like to thank the custodial maintenance and buildings and grounds staff for the stone removal efforts and the two storms that we've had in the last three weeks. Outstanding job once again. I'd like to report today, at approximately eleven twenty, a sewer cloud occurred at Spring Garden Elementary School. The township DPW and All Clear Sewer Company were called and responded. The problem was completed by one fifteen. A plan was in place if an evacuation of the building was needed. Special thank you to Mayor Fuji and Frank DeMeo of the Parks Department for the potential use of their facility in case of this evacuation. Another thank you to Commissioner Skarpelvi and Michael Luzier, the DPW, for responding to the sewer call and making sure that everything in the street was clear. Thank you Peggy Hollywood for coordination of transportation. All of the buses were ready in case we did have to evacuate the building and move the staff and students to the Parks Department. And last but not least, a special thank you to the students, staff, and parents of Spring Garden Elementary School for adapting and cooperating throughout the situation there. I can report that All Clear Sewer Company is going back to Spring Garden in a proactive manner to jet out two more lines. They're not clogged. We're just being proactive and jetting out the last two lines on the property tomorrow. They'll be on site. That's all I have, Mr. Conasolo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pisa. All right, we're going to turn it over to our building and grounds director, Mr. Berey.
Thank you, Mr. President. On one twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we met with Ben Williams, Phil Pyro, Tariq and Timmy Coster to possibly try to make the concession stands and the bar open. Today, we met with Alexis Rollman from Solutions Architect to put that plan into place. She's kind of popped us with drawings so we can get some pricing to present to the board for possible renovation. On one twenty-five, twenty-two, we transported our wrestling program and its equipment to go to the arena for the county wrestling tournament. It was a success. I'd like to thank Mayor Tucci and the shade tree for helping us pruning the tree at the warehouse. It was a very large tree, a large undertaking for this. Thank you. On January twenty-ninth, we received seven inches of snow. We made this ground, the store was tempted to great chat removing the snow. We also had an issue with the Duntrak, the most power-stirring hammer, which is currently in the shop for repair. We continued to monitor the school seven days a week checking for heating issues. We are in the process of renovating the musical office of the high school for painting, scrubbing the floor, waxing, and installing the C and S house, just to give it that break. It was used as a closet before and been turned back into an office. Mike Stappel, our grounds employee, prepared the ceiling and lavatory in the Washington School. This is above and beyond his daily responsibility. We'd like to thank Mike's fellow. We hired three points, bought our new staff members, and we are waiting to file paperwork. We promoted Brian Williams to grounds foreman, and Doc Barlow, we promoted him to assistant maintenance foreman. That's the report for my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Berey. It seems like we're getting a little bit tired, a little bit down on cylinders there. The grounds and the parks, I'm glad to see everybody is getting the step in the meeting, and everybody is getting into the right places. Guys, we're going to drive this job, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we're going to move over to the committee reports. First one that we have up is academic, and we're going to turn it over to Ms. Dancheck Martin. Take that back. We have our student, which I just told him that he was going to be number five on the list. I've heard it now. So we are going to introduce and give him a warm welcome. Our twenty-twenty-two monthly high school class president is going to have a few words for all of us here tonight and the board and for the public. The show is yours.
Thank you. Our student council is planning our Spirit Week, the week of February fourteenth, which is Valentine's Day, and we're also planning out social media posts and announcements for Black History Month. We're also trying to finalize our plans for our school games day, which is coming up later with administration, and our senior classes planning on ruling out apparel soon.
Thank you. And we're going to move it on over to our committee reports, and the first was going to be academic with Ms. Dancheck Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on January twenty-sixth. Dr. Blazer, Mr. Vangia, Mrs. Locan Solo, and myself provided an overview of the academic committee. The conversation included logistics, agenda, potential topics, roles of the members, and use of ed communication. Ms. Locan Solo reviewed the five-year curriculum cycle, highlighting the Berber Review and curriculum writing process. Mr. Vangia and Ms. Locan Solo previewed the NJ Start Strong data presentation with the academic committee. The committee provided feedback. Mr. Vangia shared two versions of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar for feedback. Central office will continue to receive feedback from all stakeholder groups in preparation for the next tour and tour again. Mr. Vangia discussed the status of student teachers and student interns. The academic committee will receive the names of the candidates through email. Dr. Blazer provided an update to all the COVID testing, masking, as well as school and community positivity numbers pertaining to the pandemic. Ms. Locan Solo reviewed the field trip to professional day request that would be on the board agenda. Mr. Vick and Ms. Hap visited the committee to discuss their out-of-state and overnight field trip request. The committee shared the field trip policy and how it applies to out-of-state field trips. Ms. Locan Solo reviewed the student, parent, and teacher surveys to inform the DLA program review. The committee provided feedback. Dr. Blazer reviewed the executive summary of the demographic report, and Dr. Blazer updated the committee on the status of district-wide registration of students and families that have not completed the required paperwork to be moved forward in the process. The next meeting of the academic committee will be Wednesday, February sixteenth, at the Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dancheck Martin. We're going to turn it over to the administration, Mr. Kuzinski.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Administration committee met on January twenty-fifth. Dr. Blazer reviewed the current COVID diagnosis. At the time of the meeting, nothing was still classified as very high red, requiring testing of athletes and participation in in-person active curriculum each week. This plan is changed on Thursday evening, and the district's head of leadership community on Friday that this testing will no longer be required. Weekly testing of unnationalized staff and voluntary student testing is ongoing. We are planning to have events in the building this weekend, including the Forest House Podle Derby, but those were canceled due to governor's state of emergency due to impending snow. Elementary winter concert resumed this week with all health and safety protocols, including masking, social distancing, and the permit, permitted, non-permitted items in place. Dr. Blazer provided an update on district-wide reregistration and reviewed the process in the timeline. This is only hearing before the board will be scheduled for February with the final resolution at the February V A E E. Dr. Blazer reviewed the executive summary of the demographic study, currently in progress. Dr. Russ Hayver, demographer, has now provided a complete report and will present it to the community at the February Board of Education meeting. Mr. Vangia and Dr. Blazer provided the draft academic calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three school years, under consideration of our shorter February break, ending the school year earlier, and consistent district-wide opportunity for professional learning, especially for new social, emotional learning programs. Administration will continue conversations with the association, parents, students, and the board with the final calendar being submitted for approval of the February board meeting. Mr. Vangia and Dr. Blazer provided a personal update. There was no legal update. Our next scheduled meeting is for February twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski. We're going to move over to finance now, Mr. Perrer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth. Mr. Pisa discussed the Anaclo Secure Electrons rebid, which is expected to be available for bidding on the seventh of February. The committee discussed the BA system and tree planting for the oval. Mr. Pisa discussed the potential schedule of the district bond refinancing, the twenty-twenty-one board of delay, which is at the state level, budget preparation, projected fund balances and the maintenance correction. The audit will be completed by March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The unaudited fund balance projection will be utilized for the budget preparation. Mr. Breezy presented the custodial maintenance and grounds roster and chain in command. Mr. Breezy will be posted for summer help within the next week, so all summer plans are in place for mid-May. Mr. Coxter discussed the ongoing efforts of the custodial, maintenance, and grounds department, and the increased work that's being done without having to utilize outside vendors. Mr. Vangia discussed the ELA consultant proposal, which is on the ultimate agenda, and the new boys volleyball and girls football programs in athletics. Dr. Blazer discussed the COVID nineteen update, reregistration status, the initial review of the demographic study, and Dr. Blazer and Mr. Vangia discussed the first draft of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three academic calendar. Our next committee meeting date is going to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, last on the committee reports is going to be Mr. Malsamal, the policy and legislative updates.
Thank you, Mr. President. The policy committee met virtually on January twenty-seventh. In attendance with myself, Mr. Scotty, Mr. Padgett, Dr. Blazer, Mr. Vangia, Mrs. Locan Solo, Ms. Bianchi, and Mr. Bemeister. Mr. Vangia, Mrs. Locan Solo, and Mr. Bemeister prepared a brief presentation providing an overview of the committee. Mrs. Locan Solo shared a diagram illustrating the cycle of policy creation and renewal. Mr. Vangia provided information on draft assessment, the overarching policy book, and its sanctions, usage rule books, the structure of agendas, and the priority criteria for policy review. We also discussed strategies and suggestions for board and public viewing of policies throughout the creation and renewal cycle. Mr. Bemeister shared the current priority spreadsheet highlighting the coding that identifies policies and regulations in need of review. The next committee, the next meeting of the policy committee will take place on Wednesday, February sixteenth at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malsamal. Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we will have questions or comments on reports, resolutions, and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulation zero one six seven allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after other speakers wishing to speak on a topic had been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or relevant or redundant, the participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. And right before, I do have a list here of the people that did sign up. We'll start with that list. We also do have some actual messages that need to be read into the minutes. What I would ask is that we will read those into the minutes at the end, once we have gone through the public portion and everyone's had an opportunity to speak or given attendance with us tonight, then we'll move over into reading those other comments into minutes. The first person on our list is Ms. Terry Porter.
Terry Porter, call forty-five, ninety-four. You're the first person from the town activity network. First of all, I know I'm going to be standing, but I would like to just tell you on that video. So, and this is my last question. I do have, it's kind of like a public service announcement because I have information that I would like to share with you that is a concern for us. We're aware of the fact that we've worked really, really hard to try and get to this school year, and there's, you see, everything down, and we're so grateful for that, except that we're really worried about the substitute shortage that we're having, and how it's affecting the children in the classrooms and our programs. And I just wanted to say the information about how other districts who are also applying permanent substitute choice are handling it. And one of the things that was pretty disconserving to us was that our neighbors, right over here to the north, northeast, northwest, whatever you want to call it, they're not hurting two hundred and forty dollars a day for substitutes. And I know definitely not that means to drive our budget, but the concern that we have is that we really need to keep our substitutes in our, in our, in our classroom environment, so to speak, in our classroom, and also for the very core programs that are going on, such as the strategy program, our specialized program. When we take those teachers to substitute because of emergency situation, we're taking away from those programs, and we know how important that is to keep those programs going, especially in a year when we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And it looks like the HPMI is the same. So we're asking this board, please look into paying our substitutes a little bit more. They may not be able to afford two forty, but if we can become somewhat competitive, it would be very, very helpful, and we would keep our stuff here and keep our teachers, our interventionists, those teachers, those specialized teachers, doing their job and supporting our children and their fellow ones. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list.
Hello. My name is Alexander Prince, and I live at sixteen, Moctee. I am a sixth grader at Yancey Call School, and I am here today to ask the Board of Education to please update their guidelines on having an in-person talent show this year. We started having in-person concerts in the grammar schools, and I feel like that we can have the talent show in a larger auditorium and space people out if we need to. Now that vaccines are able for kids ages five to twelve, this makes it safer for people to be in person and inside, and we would still require masks for audience members and when kids are not performing. I have been part of the Yancey Call Talent Show year since I was in kindergarten. In kindergarten, I performed at the talent show, and ever since then, I have been on the talent show staff for me, working backstage on sets and curtain. This is my last year to be part of the talent show, and I would like to make that experience better for everyone else rather than having it virtual. I would like to ask the Board of Education to please update their guidelines to allow in-person talent shows for grammar schools. Thank you.
So thank you so much for being here and getting up this weekend, though that's hard, hard for everybody, and a sixth grader. So the Board of Education doesn't have a guideline against in-person talent show, and I think it's important that Trino Yack, we just accept the facility request. On Yancey Call, that's what they are the most proactive TPO out there, puts in their people work first and early, and I think their paperwork is just representative of where we are in time. And you'll miss Dancheck Martin is there for Yancey Call School, and maybe we can get the word out to them that by, I think it's what, May, March, May? I don't know when, I know it's on the agenda for approval, but I don't know when they put it in. Maybe by then, we'll be able to do that. I know they were mostly worried about you guys having time to practice. I know that was a big, a big consideration, but thank you for coming. I know that was a big, a big consideration, but thank you for coming this week.
Thank you, Alexandra, very well spoken. Next up, Rick Neshman.
Hi, Rick Lee, 24, Bridge Road. First, I would like to present the district for keeping the schools open coming out of the holiday break. I know it's very important to keep our students in school as much as possible, so thank you for that. However, the issue of masking continues to affect the quality of our children's education. Recent petition is asking the Board to reconsider its commitment to allow parents to unmask their children once Governor Burton's executive order expires. The petition even suggests the use of N95 masks on our children. These masks are not even designed for children, and without a proper fit, they are completely ineffective. Any such mask ratings to be made for children is nothing more than an aftermarket imitation made of cheap materials. Let's remember that children are still the age group that are least likely to become seriously ill or uncoordinated, and staff members have all the options available, vaccination and properly fitted masks to keep them protected. There are also consequences to masking that are largely ignored and blatantly rejected. Some parents will say that kids are fine, like they have eyes in every household and classroom to see what's going on. These short-sighted and blatantly dismissive parents have absolutely no clue what kind of struggles some kids are having. And I don't deny that there are children who have adapted well to mask use, but parents have become so blinded by the so-called science that they want to force upon others that they make this into signs our own children are having, their own children are giving them, that things are really not okay. I pray to God that that's not really happening though. Even the Washington Post just published an op-ed by three scientists stating that it's time to stop masking our children. In their words, "The perception of COVID in our schools has been, quote, 'relentlessly negative' and tells students that they are disease factors while failing children, while failing to recognize that they are also creating children in their social interactions for proper development." There is a youth mental health crisis in this country, yet punitive actions that limit social interaction and role like continued, end quote. It is worth noting that the three contributors to this article have previously admitted they were universal masking. However, hot-looking at the facts and real-life consequences, they have appropriately reevaluated their position. Simply put, the science just does not support the mandatory masking, especially with children. That is why I comment petition circuitly with a defense force of the position of these scientists, as well as the petition taken by this report. So at this point, it's pretty fair to say that the science supports not masking children, let the doctor education disturb the screen. And I will close with one more quote from this article. "Our children have sacrificed a lot to protect us. Now it's time for us to give the childhood back." Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, thank you. Before I go to the next person up, which is going to be Ripley Baloo, but we're just going to ask you to hold on a second. We all, we all pretty much follow social media. We definitely have people that speak to us all the time on different facts about the masks, no masks. As everyone here knows, at this point in time, the public school district does not have local control to make that decision on optional masking. We're also aware of the fact that we're reminded at this point anyway, that there is a possibility that the state is going to lift the mandate, move it to optional, and give back local control to the school districts. We don't know if that is a certainty, because the state at this point has certainly changed things along the way. I would be, I would not be surprised if we get to February 8th and if there was an optional mask mandate that was released or given to the local control to the community, it may come with conditions as well. So what I will tell you is that everyone here that's sitting on this board is aware of the fact that no matter what need, and this is going to be one of the most difficult decisions that this board will make moving forward, because I think that collectively in the community, everyone wants to be back to a place that was pre-COVID, right? Everybody wants to be able to walk into school without a mask on. You'll say, feel like you're not going to have any kind of medical issues that are related to COVID as a result of being in school, teachers, staff members, everyone feels that way, collectively feel that way. Remember that the 90 members that sit here that may have the opportunity to make that decision, we were always going to be in the conflict of you being too slow to react or too fast to react, and that's just going to be a reality that all of us are going to face here as decision makers on what happens when we go to optional. So what I will ask for the community, I know we have a symbol going as well, is that whatever decisions we make, we are not going to be able to accommodate everybody's particular timeframe of when we should unmask versus keeping kids masked. And I just want you to understand that we're going to try to make the best decision, keeping the health and safety of our students and our staff as the, as the most important piece of this. And I think that as local control moves over to the local districts, we're going to eventually transition into an optional position, and we will eventually be in a place where we're going to see something, hopefully, that is going to be something more relevant to 2019 and prior, I then hope you can go with between 2020 and 2022. Okay, so I hope that helps some of you. I know it's not the perfect answer, but understand that we do have a community here to make the best choices that we can, and sometimes knowing that the community and how we are fighting in certain ways, we're never going to do it in a timely fashion for anyone. But just understand that once we do have that local control, we will be sitting, if necessary, we will sit in a special meeting to have that discussion, so that we can make the appropriate decision for the community as a whole. Thank you. Okay, next up is Ripley.
My name is Ripley Baloo, and I live at 136 Center Street. I'd like to thank the district for remaining fully open after the holiday break. The thought of going back to virtual learning is just unthinkable to me. During virtual learning, I really struggled with my schoolwork. I am a student with autism and ADHD, and not being able to attend school in person last year really impacted me academically and socially. During virtual learning in elementary school, I was very close to failing several subjects. I am now a seventh grader at the middle school and have made high honor roll for the first two semesters of in-person learning. And honestly, academics aren't even what I struggle with the most during virtual learning. I've always struggled with social interactions with my peers because of my disability, and virtual learning made it so much harder. Being able to be in person for my first year of middle school year has been so amazing. Thank you for allowing me to participate in a true public school learning experience this year. I really hope that my friends and I are able to continue an in-person school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ripley Baloo. Next up, we have Denise Baloo.
All right, we pull this up together all over here, all of us. Denise Baloo, 136 Center Street, I live in Red Lake, I'm small.
I'm glad you did that.
I want to start by thanking the district for several things, because I often joke back what I should, and I feel that's the appropriate thing to do, especially tonight. It's been a really rough couple of years for all of us, and decisions had to have been made without much guidance and without much modern history left on. I'd first like to thank the district for remaining fully open following the holiday break. This could not have been a easy decision, and I know many other districts made different decisions, so thank you for that. I'd also like to once again thank the district for me and saving the extended day program this school year. These two decisions were pivotal in allowing working parents some flexibility while adapting to the pandemic world that we've been facing for a third school year now. I also want to thank the district for addressing school lunch issues that were affecting our students. The change has been noticeable and much appreciated. I'm also very thankful that the district continues to support their commitment to choice regarding masking of students once the executive order expires. It's time for us to let our children breathe again and to see their beautiful faces. Of course, masking should always be a personal family choice, however, it is not the choice of many of us. My last segment of thanks goes to Mr. Riley, Mr. Scotty, and Mr. Pataglia. Reason being, we want to thank you for being the one-third of the Board of Education trustees that have chosen to take the moral high ground and rise above membership in the Facebook group Nutley Public School Parents. While it's been clearly presented at several Board of Education meetings that this group discriminates, belittles, and platter kicks at and fans several Nutley Public School Parents without warning or notice, six out of nine of the Board of Education trustees remain members of that group. That's shocking and sad to me, because guided my voting this year and will guide my voting next year. I once again ask Board of Trustees to reconsider their membership in this group, as membership implies agreement with the unjust practices and saluted echo-chambered narrative this group has become. I have to back up a little bit. The group that doesn't show up at these meetings because they already have the ear of the Board of Education and don't need to show up because they are already influencing the Board of Education and are already in their back pockets, are already sending emails. Okay, if you could just give me 30 more seconds, I will finish by saying social media is a powerful tool. In the bubble I'm speaking about, it's pretty much the only way parents hear what is happening in other classrooms and other schools within the district. Yet, we are asked to rephrase on talking to each other on social media regarding school issues. Is this to be asked of the Board of Education trustees as well as the parents? It's because two-thirds of the Board of Education is in this group. So I just feel there needs to be a lighted decision made, is social media good, is it bad, is it evil? What is it? I personally believe it can be used for good and evil, but what is happening on social media now is parents are reaching out to each other because it's the only way they are finding out what's going on in the schools.
So, Mrs. Baloo, I'm going to just ask you to just, and I appreciate, I appreciate the commentary. I certainly won't speak for the board. I'm going to speak for myself. I am the president of the board this time, and I'm going to tell you that I'm on just about every potential Nutley-related site on social media.
And how do you think that, does that make sense?
No, I don't, and I will tell you, I don't, in my position, I don't comment. I use it as a resource for seeing what's going on. Sometimes there's things that show up there that I would not have known until maybe later. When those things do show up, I try to vet them out to find out their truthworthiness. Sometimes things get posted on there that should probably come to the district first. You know, and sometimes I go private message people and say, have you sent, have you gone back to the building principal? Have you done certain things? Because we do have a chain of command that we try to follow so that things don't get clogged up in the system, right? The Board of Education, we're in a role that things get flowed up to us, right? If things cannot get resolved at the lower levels, whether it's the teacher, the building principal, the administrator, superintendent, it eventually gets to us. But if we sidetrack that and post it on social media or decide to go directly to board members, sometimes that gets delayed. So I use it as a resource. Now, when I'm on those social media sites, again, I don't comment. I'm sure if you look at any of the things that I'm on, you very, very seldom see me post anything, maybe on my own private page. I'll occasionally post something, but I also don't see the harm in a board member, if they so choose, to be on all of those sites, because it does, as you said, social media can be a very powerful tool, and if there's information that's being fed out onto those feeds that don't necessarily make it to the appropriate place in the district to be handled, I also think that it's important that we have the access to all of those individual social media sites, so that when something does happen, we have the ability to either private message someone, to say, have you followed this chain of command, or bring it to the appropriate administrator so that they can look into certain things. So maybe we can agree to disagree. I don't, like I said, I don't post, I don't make it up, because I really, I don't forecast anything on social media. It's especially in the roles that we're in, it becomes a debate on anything that we can pass on. So rather than debate, I'd rather pay attention and just read what's happening and see if there's something that I can do in my role to either help that situation get resolved, but to limit the ability for me to not be on a specific page in exchange for community members not happily being there, I think we would have to agree to disagree on that, only because I look at it as a resource, whereas, you know, other people, you, I don't know if you were tickled off that site, I don't know developments. I know that there's definitely a little shepse factor there between those sites, but I don't want to, I guess I don't want to be included, and I'm sure no other board member here wants to be included in being, or board members, or certain people on that social media page being in the process of the board members as a result of them finding what's happening on social media, like I would be doing on a page that you're related to or any other page that's related to them. So I just wanted to make that statement. I don't, I don't.
I absolutely appreciate that. I appreciate all that you're doing for us now. I appreciate hearing what we have to say. I guess my one concern here is that the page says Nutley Public School Parents and has systematically removed anybody who does not conform to their, I mean, that's the only reason other pages have even been made, because you don't agree with this group, you don't agree with this group.
And I was going to say, no, we don't have jurisdiction over that.
Oh, absolutely, no, but you have the decision of whether or not to, by being in that group, you are agreeing to what they do, basically. I think that's what it is. So if it's okay for you and whoever else is in that group, if it's okay that six out of nine members of the Board of Education decide it's okay for a group calling itself Nutley Public School Parents to boot out people, then you know what it is.
And like I said, I can't, we don't have jurisdiction.
We can absolutely agree with this.
I agree, and I don't, and like I said, we don't have jurisdiction on that. So if somebody decided to name it that particular way, if it does not meet any criteria where we would ask them to have to change that name for legal reasons, there is nothing that we can do. And I will tell you again, I look at those social media sites as ways to just see what's going on between parent groups, and if there's anything that's at least permitted, there's something that might be addressed.
And I've said that several times in several other meetings, I understand why people ended up in that group to begin with. They want to be in all the groups, and you guys want to be at the pulse of what's going on in Nutley, you want to hear what all the parents are saying, but to hear from the administration, don't post on social media, come to us first. It just reeks of burying things. If we don't go to social media, we don't get to talk to the other parents, we don't know what's going on. When the mask and shoe went down in Washington School, nobody would have known that, nobody would have known that if I, and I did go to.
All right, so, and I don't think that we're going to be in a position of we're going to be able to come to any agreement on this particular topic. As I said, your feeling is that if you put it into social media, action station, I can tell you that when there's times that I can see something, that I can put this in the right hands, I do that, and I will say that the fastest way to get things resolved is to bring it back to the chain of command in the district.
Which is what I always do, and it was the first thing I did in this particular.
And I will tell you that I've seen time and time again where issues go to social media first, and it becomes a perception of everybody's own idea of what's happening.
I don't, I don't think it should be first, I don't think it should be second, I think it should be all inclusive, because I think that instead of just doing the chain of command, I think that what needs to happen is that parents have a right, and this is our right. I mean, I don't see anybody else from the other group up here arguing.
Again, I don't want to debate the other group.
And I don't either.
This is a discussion between you and I for the public, and I will tell you that we can certainly agree to disagree on this, but I don't think that we're, I mean, and again, I don't want to take away from the public's time, but I don't think that we're going to make any progress in this one.
And the near point I want to make is that is the public's time. And our first amendment right is on social media, is on Facebook. We should be allowed to talk to each other. I'm always on the chain of command. Everybody here knows I do.
Good, I understand that. Well, I would just post it, maybe you can sample.
I actually have hivers left. Quite a few times we're going to the Board of Education. Well, why didn't you talk to this person first? Why didn't you do that first? At this point, honestly, I don't know what to do. I do go to the principal first and then I move on from there. That I've always done.
And we all appreciate that. Because I think that when you do that that way, I will tell you, it's the most efficient way. I will tell you, and I say this to everyone, if you feel at that point things are not getting done and you want to CC me all of those emails, I have no problem.
I absolutely will. I can counterpoint you, because I CC everybody. Because we have to CC everybody. It's not my place to do it, but I do it anyway. I will do it all of the emails.
The only reason we have a problem with this, we don't know how to reply all the time. That's one thing that we don't know.
Oh, and I know. And I know that actually you're not allowed to reply or whatever. You're not allowed. It's why everybody calls on the telephone because there can't be a paper trail. Somebody's got to know that we have.
There's confidential information at times, and so if you get to the board that comes from the administration, so. Thank you. All right, the next one up, we have Paul LaMachio.
Good evening. Again, I want to thank everyone, congratulate the members of the Board for your election and the newly appointed position. Also want to thank you for keeping the schools open. Again, we greatly appreciate that, our kids need that, and so thank you for doing so. And first need to start with a question from two previous board meetings. Dr. Blazer said that once the executive order ended, that masks would be optional. Is that the case? Has that changed?
Do you want me to come in and answer that? So, as I said earlier, right now, as of February 9th, we have the potential to go to an optional mask mandate. So, that's going to give local control to the district to decide how they're going to handle the masks in school. And at this time, we don't have any further guidance except the February 9th date. I do believe that if it doesn't get extended beyond March, February 9th, that it will likely come with conditions. And so, there's a lot of uncertainty as to what February 9th may look like. But as we continue to get more information, the Board will see exactly what our role is going to be if it does not get extended, to see how we would address the optional mask guidelines in the district.
Okay, so now my issue with that is that Dr. Blazer said on two separate meetings, and I think it was a parent phone call, reiterated that once the executive order ended, it would be optional. In the latest reentry plan, it was snuck in there that, you know, the executive order, if the executive order is not extended, board is the board decides. And to be honest, you're correct. The reply to what I had to ask is kind of discouraging because you know what happened when we asked for a letter, it was happening, it was happening, and then all of a sudden, everyone went and asked for a word, and there was no letter. So, that's very discouraging. And I want to ask, how do they go back on that word, on your answer on that, at least three days?
Well, let Dr. Blazer again, a couple of comments, yeah?
So, what I was going to say is my report about the reentry plan, the language in the reentry plan has been unchanged during June 14th that we presented and is published. There was an update when the guidelines changed in August. And then we updated it again in January when the executive order was extended. If you look at all three of those plans, the language says the same thing. There's nothing snuck in. We worked very hard to be clear and concise and use the same language in all three plans. We haven't changed it. The only thing we've changed is rights, right? In June, we said that masking would be optional. Then, sorry, then the governor, right? They mask mandated in all the schools for us to reopen. We updated that plan in August. It says the only thing that accepts that is to change. And again, in January, the governor suggested that mask mandate through February. You look at the language, I'm happy to provide the all three drafts. We've been very consistent. It is, if the mandate is not extended after February 9th, it is a board decision. We make administrative recommendations. And as Mr. Carmassella said, the board will have to decide on the timing of one that's that's optioned.
I understand, but like I said, you said two previous board meetings that looked at ending it be optional. Let's hear it, let's hear it.
And again, if you look at the plan, I read the language of the plan. It does, in each one of those three plans, it tells how it can be accepted. It is not my decision, it's a board decision with administrative regulation. And it's very clear in the section of the plan.
Well, then I'll say that we misunderstood, and that's.
And then again, the board, I think Mr. Carmassella did a good job of explaining why they want to do this if the governor doesn't extend it.
I did want to read something I know was asking these questions. Can I come back or can I do it?
Well, let's do this. We have, we have two more people on the list. And if we still have the time to do it, we'll have you come back up. Next one on the list is, you're welcome. Next person on the list is Peter O'Reilly.
Peter O'Reilly, meeting center, Hawthorne Avenue. I just want to say to the students that came out that they did an excellent job. You guys ought to be commended very well. I think we ought to look at these two students and realize that they are the ones that are suffering for us. And I think that we rely too heavily outside things that none of us can really control and we don't take into consideration students just like these. They aren't the only ones. All of our kids are suffering. Child suicides are skyrocketing. Nobody can make the connection exactly whether or not it pertains to masking or all of this in general. But it is a massive problem. We are doing damage to our children. We have to, have to acknowledge that what we are asking our children to do and what our children are wearing are not effective. I come and pick up my son from school. I've dropped him off in the mornings from time to time. Most of our kids are wearing cloth masks. The CDC has said undoubtedly that these masks are virtually useless. This shouldn't be, hey, we don't know. The Board should be saying right here, right now, if the governor ends the mask mandate, that you are going to do the same. This shouldn't be for a board of nine to dictate what happens. If it's good enough for the state, it's good enough right here and now. I'd also like to ask again something that Carlo just brought up. I don't know what backhanded deal happened after we had a resolution, a motion that passed on the floor, and then a backhanded deal not in the public eye, which does not meet the bottom rules of order, which we construct these meetings under. We changed the vote and changed what everybody here wanted. A higher level, hopefully written minus four in construction with a member of the community and our lawyer. And my understanding is that some of the board members that voted for that letter were not involved in that meeting. How dare you? We have to remember our children in all this. There are consequences, and it will be remembered.
Thanks, Mr. Blazer.
Parents and administrator about that change. That was a positive change.
Next, next up, Mr. Cantorza.
Good evening, board members. I'm not going to stay up here very long. I'm going to kind of echo what's been already said about the mask mandates. I would echo what's been said about the mask mandates. Thank you for that. You know my position, you know the position of a bunch of other parents sitting down about the mask and how we feel it hurts our children. We see it. And we very much want, I understand your position, first off, about having to have this discussion among the board, whether or not, how you're going to move forward should the mask mandate, the executive order expire. Don't take the choice away from us. That's all, that's all we're asking. People who want to wear masks, have children wearing masks, they're welcome to do so. You said it's a decision you're going to make. You're taking, don't take the decision out of our hands. For our family, what's right for us. That's all I'm asking for you. I'm not arguing, I'm playing figures. I just want you guys to consider that it's not a one-size-fits-all for everybody. Just remember that when you do have this conversation and give us the choice for what's right for our families. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantorza. And this problem is, we're going to have to set up, Mr. Cantorza, is the optional component of this, right? We, I think that everybody, community-wise, believes that at some point we want to be prior to 2020, right? Where we are in an environment without masks. There's going to be a transitional period to getting there and it's just a reality, right? The optional is going to be that first transition to go into a non-mass environment.
I think it's important to recognize that if you look at the data, do you really think this has made any kind of difference? Is there data that shows this has made any difference? Other than on the emotional state of our children? It hasn't changed the numbers case-wise in any positive direction.
And I will tell you, I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't want to debate the portion of what we're required to do by the state, right? Because the state is, right now, delegating what we need to do, okay? When that comes over to a local decision, we believe that at some point, the community as a whole wants to be back to something that looks, at a time when we did not have masks. There's going to be a transitional period in getting there. So, all I can say is, is once we get closer to the 9th and we know what kind of control we're going to have, if there's no conviots to the things that we are going to have to abide by, then this board can sit down and have a really strong conversation about what the optional masks are going to look like in the district and how we are transitioning to what hopefully will be something normal and pre-COVID. But at this point, I don't want to say that we can do one or the other because I don't know what the state's going to do. We may not be making this decision on February 9th.
I understand.
And again, and I'm not trying to be difficult, and I'm not trying to avoid your question. I think we've all seen how dynamically things change at the state level, almost on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, we saw it a couple of weeks ago with the way they changed from 10 days to 5 days of kids coming back and they had to be fully masked. So, that was a challenge for us in certain of the schools. So, all I'm saying is, is that sometimes the decisions that we make are not necessarily as clear as publicly see it because they say, okay, we're going to have to mask. School districts have local control. But then there's another shoe that comes through the Department of Education that says, make sure that, by the way, you guys are actually opt-in, you make your own local decisions, but just make sure that you follow these guidelines, right? That's what makes it challenging all the time. So, all I'm telling you is, is that I don't have any issue with being transparent with what we need to do to get to the next step for the district. But we don't have enough information to make that decision now. And all I ask is, is that I know you've been very patient, everyone has been patient, and it's been a challenging time. We will get through this. I know that we're not going to make a perfect decision because no matter how good the decision is maybe for community member A, it may be the complete opposite of what community member B wanted. So, we already know that we're going into a very, very challenging decision that the board's going to make. But I think that number one is going to be based on the safety of our kids, the amount of space that we have inside of that change in direction from the state. And hopefully, we'll be in a position where if everything is clean and clear, we'll be able to create that option for masks. But I don't know what that outcome's going to be, so I don't want to say yes or no. And I don't, certainly not put the board in that situation when we don't have the evidence about the state of what we may be required to do.
I understand. I don't want you to sacrifice the safety of my child for the benefit, the perceived benefit of someone else's child. My child is important as well, and their safety is important as well. And their reaction, the impact of this on them should not be discounted, dismissed. Okay? That's all, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Okay, I'm back up. All right, so, Mr. Marchionne, you were closing us out tonight? You want to speak?
I do.
Yeah, come on. You're going to close us out, Mr. Marchionne, okay? And then we'll have Mr. DePis over here to answer those other pieces into the minutes.
Henry Prince, 60-month-old. I don't have anything prepared to say. I didn't come here to argue, I didn't come here to talk about masks. But when my son is used as a pawn and saying that he is suffering, he's not suffering. He suffers when he goes home at night to my parents, who are elderly and sick, to my father with his cancer in our house, who's dying on my couch. That's when he suffers. And he understands the importance of putting on a mask at school so that he can come home at night and take his mask off and have dinner at our kitchen table. We have traveled throughout the pandemic, we've gone to theme parks, we've gone on airplanes. We've done all of this because we're wearing masks, we're staying socially distanced, and we're just following the signs. I understand the other parents and their practitioners. You went through that, right? You went through that.
So, yeah, listen, let's keep the board, everybody.
I understand the other parents, and I'm not going to change their minds. We're all going to agree to disagree on this topic. I just want to say that my child suffered through virtual school. He suffered being away from everybody. He's happy being in school, and if that means he has to wear a mask, he's not suffering as a result of that. He enjoys being in the classroom. And that's all I want to say. He is not suffering wearing a mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, use my child's voice.
Listen, calm down. Come on, we're almost done, everyone. Just, I know it's difficult, I know there's a lot of emotion and passion, but let's just try to hold it for, we're fortunate yet in the meeting. Mr. Marchionne, you're going to close us out. Here's the deal, you have to say something really nice and exciting again.
Yes, yes, I'll be nice as hell. All right, thank you for letting me speak again. So, I did want to share, you know, and as she just said, you know, people have different experiences with this and different reasons for doing what they're doing and having the feelings they are. And I'm discounting anyone's feelings, I'm just sharing my own experiences with my own children and the growing number of parents that feel the same way. So, my children get to school at 7 o'clock in the morning, they have early arriving, they remain masked until 3:20, like eight and a half hours. There is a very short, I think it's 10, maybe 20-minute lunch where they can take their mask off. There's no, there's no more mask breaks because it's too cold outside. So, eight hours, that's insane. It's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking, okay? I know that this is difficult. I know it's difficult. You guys are sitting here for two hours, I'm sure you're dying to break it off. I'm sure as soon as you leave, you're going to break them off. I assure you, okay? My kids are eight hours. Eight hours, okay? Think about that. Try it out. Try it out for eight hours and see what it does to you, day after day after day after day. You're playing gym with a mask on. That's insane. Insane. The sports are playing without masks, in the same schools where the kids are sitting trying to learn with masks. And thank God you're letting them play sports without masks. I all that. I appreciate the deep concern and the deep frustration that I feel, that my children, my children are suffering. They are suffering. They heard about Martin Luther King, in honor of Martin Luther King, I have a dream assignment. And my children said that their dream is to not have masks anymore. That is, that's heartbreaking. And mine weren't the only ones. They understand what's going on. They're in secondary, but they understand what's going on. They understand that they don't want to do it anymore. It's uncomfortable. I work at a high school, I have kids sneezing into their mask and they keep their mask on. I have kids that are in high school with mucus on their necks. It's disgusting, and it's no wonder more kids are getting sick. The CDC says these don't work. They don't work. It's a show, it's pretend. It's pretend, okay? That's all. CDC says, we're listening to the science, the science, the science.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. Sorry. CDC also has a study that shows that in schools where it's masked, mask mandate. Sorry. CDC also has a study that shows that in schools where it's mask, mask mandated or it's no mask mandated, the schools with no mask mandate have a higher occurrence of COVID in those schools. And I'll send you the, I'll send you the data. I'll send you the graph that shows that. There are countries that are moving away from the mandates. There are states moving away from mandates. New York State just said that the mask mandates are illegal. New York State, which is worse than, worse than New Jersey as far as this is concerned. We need to be moving in the right direction. We need to be a leader, not following, we don't need to be a last once again with this. We need to be a leader. We need to push for our kids to go to school in peace and happiness. Thank you very much.
We did, you had something on the agenda items? Okay, you can come up. You just have to make sure that you're going to have, we, we don't have to write it down. So if you give your name and address, I will run it in.
It's Joan Romino, 48 Lord Road. Agenda item 13, approval of service agreement, Learn Well. What is that?
Learning laws, a homebound instruction platform that we use for students that can attend due to usually a hospital illness or something of that nature.
In other words, tutors.
Virgins.
Yes. And what is the, a paraprofessional? I'm not aware of what that is.
The paraprofessionals are instructional, instructional aides, so that they help support teaching and learning in different capacities.
Thank you.
Okay, is it an agenda item? Is it polyglot? Sure, that's fine. Come on up. What's your name?
Melissa Churchill. I'm at 131 Brookfield Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the learning laws in the district. And I want to thank the board-
I'm sorry. I have to ask you to read your mask off.
Oh, I'm sorry. No problem.
Thank you. And can you just give me the number of your street again?
Sure. It's 131 Brookfield Avenue.
Thank you.
So I wanted to talk about the learning laws that's going on in the district. And I asked Mrs. Brookfield, she's already got my email address to send me the, the scores of, for the K-3 students and the reading laws that's going on. I'd like for President of the Board to take a look closely at the K-3 population. I know tonight you just went on about the 4th to 12th because that was the day you had shared. But I really hope that you take a look at the K-3 students as well. A child spends grades of K-3 learning how to read because they are expected to be able to read to learn unless they're in fourth grade. All our students in second grade and under have never had a normal school year, which is significantly impacting their reading and writing skills. As a reader, a reading tutor in this community, I see how the strains of virtual learning have left holes in our youngest learners' foundational reading and writing skills. Science has showed us that learning to read follows a sequential scope and sequence. If a child has not mastered a necessary skill from a younger grade and we move them along without intervening, that child will continue to struggle in the older grades, making it even more challenging to remediate as expectations are higher and workload demands increase. Parents in this district are being informed that their K-3 child is below grade level in reading, and because so many students are struggling, they are not low enough to qualify for the LLI program. These students are not receiving any interventions other than those that can be provided with the general education classroom teacher. I ask you to consider, can our district provide more small group literacy instruction in the elementary school for those students who are below grade level but may just need a little extra help to get caught up? Are we assessing their reading skills with enough depth to catch those struggling readers? Are we habitually supporting our classroom teachers in their literacy instruction? Now, these students and teachers would benefit from more science-based reading intervention programs at their fingertips. My sons are dyslexic and the Wilson training that you provided for the special education teachers was fantastic. My sons were really behind reading level and are finally on reading level at, at NCC, and they have a fantastic teacher who was trained. So thank you for that. I just hope for more of that. We need more interventionists in every elementary school for our train of the science of reading. And as we continue to decide how to spend, give us our funds and the budget for the next four years, I implore you to consider how we can improve our, and increase our reading interventions for the youngest learners in our district. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so public portion is closed. For the public that's here with us, I'm going to have Mr. DePice that read in to the minutes a couple of responses that we received from the public who are not here this evening, and they'll be read into the minutes now.
Please note, this letter and its accompanying attachments are for public comments of the 13122 Board meeting. My name is Christina Soretsky, and my address is 343 Woodruff Drive in Nutley. Dear Dr. Glazer, Mr. Mayor, Board of Education members, and Board of Commissioners, we are writing this letter on behalf of not just ourselves, but of the 233 people who signed the accompanying petition. Please note the petition being presented required address and email information from the undersigned as well as their role and community so that we can meet a high degree of veracity and with respect to representing the actual residents of Nutley. While we are unable to attend a Board of Education meeting in person this evening, please don't mistake our lack of presence and lack of passion or commitment in advocating for good public health policy. As stated in the accompanying petition, we are appealing to the Nutley Board of Education and Nutley School Administration to go up with a school mask policy that takes into account community spread and uses the, uses that as threshold for what masking should be mandatory. This will not be driven by arbitrary dates, nor will it rely on the governor exercising emergency powers. Rather, it will be simply based on whether the spread of COVID-19 in Nutley is tracked as high or substantial for indoor facilities based on CTC metrics. When community spreads high, then mandatory masking in the school goes into effect. When it is not, then masks become optional. We know from a number of reputable sources, the study's masks are effective at reducing transmission of COVID-19. There are four attachments. They're not being read. They'll be into the minutes when I produce the minutes for the, for this meeting on February 28. This is not our opinion. This is a scientific conclusion based upon multiple studies. Additionally, as of January 28, 2022, the American Academy of Pediatrics updated its interim mask guidance for schools returning sports, urging the prioritization of in-person learning and diligent adherence to COVID safety measures, including vaccines and universal masking. We know that everyone is looking for an off-ramp for masking and other COVID-19 protocol. We understand that people are tired of pandemic. Unfortunately, the pandemic isn't tired of us. We believe that an ongoing policy that includes mask usage when appropriate for the duration of the pandemic and for potential transition to an endemic would be an excellent way for the district to help meet its stated goal of maintaining, of maintaining, excuse me, a comprehensive approach to student-staff safety, health, and wellness. Please note that we are not opposed to masking in optional schools. We simply don't think they should be optional in school while we are experiencing one of the worst circumstances that have taken place during this two-and-a-half-year, two-plus-year pandemic. We may not be the loudest group you hear from. We don't have coordinated T-shirts or banners. We don't have large numbers of people who are comfortable getting up and making public statements, especially when the current tenor of this topic. However, what we do have on our side of the science, we hope that as representatives of an educational institution, you will weigh the science appropriately against it and the emotion and opinion that you will be invariably met with regarding this topic and that you will make a decision that is based upon the interest of the health and safety of our students, faculty, and all of our students, all of our school personnel. We thank you in advance for consideration. Best regards, Kiki, Kripton, Janice Brager, Andrea Prince, Christina Soretsky. Second public comment. Hello? 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 The note sent to Dr. Glazer on the Board event last night refers to petitions coming to tonight's January 31st Board meeting regarding the masking of school. As per procedure, we'd like to comment and to be read within the meeting notes. We look at 74 Virginia Avenue in Nutley. Our son, Lee McNodna, attends Lincoln School. Thank you. As parents who have made a long list of sacrifices these last two years, so, so many mothers have also been, keep ourselves and our sons safe. We are extraordinarily distressed to hear that masks could soon become optional in schools. We are aware that many students are possibly faculty or where our eight-year-old son attends third grade at Lincoln School would potentially be unvaccinated and without masks. Science proves the spread could happen quickly and rapidly. Aside from our most pressing concerns for, for the health of our son and our own health, we are concerned about all the interruptions that could occur in, in his schooling, from what would likely be massive absences and needs to our quarantine without masks acting as protection. I wish it could be present at the Board of Education meeting tonight to share this statement in person. Ironically, the very reason we won't be and why many in town who share our views won't be is because we are afraid of the exposure of people planning to attend who are likely to adhere strictly to the masking protocol. We don't feel safe being there in person. Yet we will be forced to send our son where he will be safe if this change occurs. We urge you to, not to consider mask, making masks optional at this stage of the pandemic. If not going to help the safety of our children in this town, then at least in the interest of keeping as many students and teachers able to continue coming to school as possible. Thank you, James and Leesa McNodna. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Why none of those letters not timed as we were timed?
Well, I'm going to say, we have our Board administrator who did not read the letter. Read it into a minute. The fonts are tiny. So I would say that if it took him five minutes to read it into the record because of the font size that he's dealing with, we apologize for exceeding the three minutes.
So letters moving forward will be timed?
Letters, we, we don't have a problem reading letters in to be read into the minutes, but understand that, that we as a board here, we have a certain amount of time. I've been trying to give the, the public our opportunity to speak. We've exceeded our 20 minutes for the public. We've read those into the minutes. And Ms. Ballou, no offense, but you did those for time today. So, and I, and I want to be compassionate and give everybody the opportunity to speak. But we have our, our Board administrator who's reading into the minutes. Somebody else is writing. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to our resolutions now. Shall we have Mr. and Mrs. Dancheck-Morton for academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to move academic resolutions, one to your previous written.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
Yes.
Mr. Batatlu.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo. Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. Uh, administration, Mr. Kazinsky, would you take that, please? Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
Yes.
Mr. Batatlu. Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Vice President Farar, would you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I do finance resolutions, one through 17, written.
Right.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
One, two, and four through 17, yes, on the three.
Mr. Batatlu.
Yes, but I think I'm a bit-
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. Uh, Legislative Legal, Mr. Bosano. Uh, hold on. All right, so let, oh, okay, so you want to do that in the discussion part when you already? All right, so, Mr. Bosano, let's move Legal and Legislation Resolution One for the Board. Okay, I move Legal.
Legislation and Legal, Resolution Number One.
Okay, anybody have a discussion? We have, Dr. Glazer's going to read something into the minute, so we have any discussion prior to that speaking now? Okay, so we've got to read that into the little.
This is School Board Recognition Month. We have resolved that another Board of Education acknowledges School Board Recognition Month for January 2022. Whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education, which adopts the administrative approach to implement state education law, has established rigorous standards through its proclamation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which set the expectations of academic achievement for nearly 1.4 million public schoolchildren. And whereas the New Jersey's locally-elected and appointed Boards of Education play a vital role in ensuring that their local school districts meet state standards and adhere to state and federal education statute regulations, with the goal of preparing all students for college and to work life, thereby enabling them to compete in the global economy. And whereas the New Jersey's 5,000 nonpartisan local Boards of Education members and charter school trustees and public servants who dedicate their time without their benefit to the oversight of school district operations, sound financial processes, comprehensive policies, curriculum staffing, and the well-being and academic achievement of all students in the district. And whereas, the efforts of local Boards of Education in conjunction with state education officials and local educators have built a foundation of success that is led to New Jersey's status as a leader of student achievement, as evidenced by the National Assessment and Educational Progress Board. And whereas the National School Boards Association and the New Jersey School Boards Association have declared January 2022 the School Board Recognition Month. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education and the Acting Commissioner of Education recognizes the contributions of our state local Boards of Education to the academic success of its public school students, and expresses a sincere appreciation to local Board of Education members for their continued focus on the achievement of children throughout New Jersey. And may it further evolve that the New Jersey State Board of Education and the Acting Commissioner of Education encourage as qualified New Jersey citizens to consider serving as members of their local school boards. Angelica Allen McMillan, Acting Commissioner, and Acting Secretary of the New Jersey State Board of Education and Captain for President of the New Jersey State Board of Education.
All right, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
Yes.
Mr. Batatlu.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. And let's go back to Mr. Bosano for policy. And Mr. President, with Policy Resolution One. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
Yes.
Mr. Batatlu.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. Mr. Kazinsky, would you take personnel, please?
Yes, sir. Personal Resolution Number One.
Need a second. Okay, and let's do a roll call.
Mr. President, please, I, do you have some discussion?
Yes, I do.
Also, I didn't hear you. I, I just wanted to make one comment. I applaud our buildings and grounds department as I always applaud all of our staff, but certainly in this particular thing, I, I noticed when we promoted a couple of our diligent workers from inside the system, and I'm, I'm more than happy to see that. I'm also happy to see as a retired fireman that some of the custodians that we hired have come with us with a black seal. I know that's something we've been looking for for many years. We use a retirement and then train our staff. Having them come to us with the black seal in pocket is, is a step in the right direction. I applaud our administration. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bosano.
Yes.
Mr. Batatlu.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Cornisello.
Yes. Any old business to come before the Board? Any new business with the Board? Okay, we're in the Board of Education. We discuss a matter exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:41. Now, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recesses the closing of the session at this time to discuss- to discuss personnel and litigation. If it further resolves, the results of discussions will be made publicly by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting with the Board of Education when there, the reason for discussion of substantive closed session no longer exists. Uh, action may be taken at the end of our executive closed session, and we have a motion to go with the closing. All right, we appreciate that closing. Thank you.